All right, we go ahead and start. We appreciate you all coming out tonight. My name is Shawn Terry. I'm the mayor in Salina. I have Councilman Weber sitting where he usually does in church in the back row there. We've got Carmen Roberts. Where's Carmen? Councilman Roberts is right there. Mindy Candy, one of the councilwomen. Andy Hopkins, one of our councilmen. Chad would have been here, but he had a previous engagement. Wayne Neighbors had to go to another city tonight because he does taxes for cities and he couldn't make it tonight. But we want to thank you all for coming out tonight. We're going to try and do these a couple of times a year to really kind of bring up what's going on in the city. We've got a lot of things changing, as you can see, going on around town. We've got all of our staff here tonight. I know City Manager Jason Lommer will be up here in a little bit to kind of let staff talk, kind of go through a little presentation that we have. One thing if you see up here at City Bot, if you've been on our, if you go on our Salina, Jessica, what's our Salina more?
Salina-tx.gov.
Dot what?
Dot gov.
Dot gov. If you go on our website page, it'll give you some of these you can sign up for, like City Bot. One thing cool about City Bot is, and there's not too many cities right now that do this, where you can actually sign up for the texting program. You can text in if you see a pothole or if you see a sign down. You'll go to the right department. They'll respond to you with a text saying they received it, then they'll respond back saying they fixed it. And so we're trying to put a lot of things in place to be as transparent as possible. We all have busy lives and social media. It's a big part of our lives today. And so if you go on the website, we also have a toe for it that you can sign up for. Anytime a storm comes in, it'll send you a text message or actually call you and tell you where the storms are located in the area and all that. And so again, thanks for coming out tonight. I know you all have a lot better places probably than being than here, but we hope you can see what the time and effort that council and staff has put into this presentation, but also what will be going on in the city. We're averaging about probably 127 building permits a month right now, which that equates in my calculations to about 250 to 300 new people a month moving to Salina. So to try to keep them educated on what's going on in our city, you know, and that's just not from Texas. We've got people moving from all over different states where they have different halls and different ways things are governed. So we just try to be as transparent as possible. Today's not the end. If you have any questions after, at the end, we'll take any questions you have. Like I said, we have all the staff here, each department heads here tonight, hopefully answer those as best as they can. But anytime you have questions throughout the year, we're very accessible. I know my cell phone, all of our emails are on there. Jason Lommer and all of our other staff, they're very easy to get ahold of. So don't just wait till two times a year. If you've got something that's bugging you or you hear something out there, please reach out to us and let us know. So at this time, I'm going to invite Jason Lommer, City Manager, to go up and kind of go through the presentation.
How's everybody doing tonight? I'm not really good with the mic. I'm going to try to speak loud. Can everybody hear me if I talk like this?
Yes.
I'm more comfortable not walking with a mic, and so that's okay. I like to do that. As the mayor said, we really wanted to have a town hall meeting. This has actually came from some citizen suggestions about having a town hall meeting so we can kind of get the word out. We tried really hard with Instagram and Facebook and the website, and of course we have monthly council meetings, and then we have several public meetings on projects and plans. But as part of that, you know, about the beginning of last year, we did a large citizen survey. And with that citizen survey, we really wanted to find out, you know, feedback about what was important to the community. And, you know, it also guided and helped council in drafting a strategic plan that we recently adopted. There's copies in the back if anybody wanted a copy of it. We're going to go through some of the results of that strategic plan also. But we received about almost 800 responses in three and a half weeks. I mean, that's, you know, for a city with, I think, current population's about, you know, it's hard to nail the current population because we're growing so fast, but you know, anywhere from, when we did the survey, about maybe 13,000 to 16,000 people. So to get 800 responses online is really good. And there was also about 5,000 unique comments that people left on that survey. We published the results of that online. I don't know if we have all 5,000 comments online, but I've read through them. It's really interesting to read different people's comments because, you know, we can't be everywhere, you know? So when people have ideas and suggestions, we take those to heart. If there's something we can do to fix it, or think about in the future, or a future project, or an idea, or a way to run things, we want to hear those from you all. You know, on the survey, 75% of the people are either very satisfied or satisfied with the quality of life in Salina. And I think everybody understands this, one of the biggest qualities of Salina is that rural and country feel. I think we're, staff's very aware of that, council's very aware of that, and we talk about it a lot, how as we grow, we can maintain that rural feel. I mean, because growth is coming. I mean, we're on Preston Road and the Tollway, and you can see how the growth has come to the south, but we really want to maintain that in a Salina way. Amongst the categories, business retail and downtown development are also really popular. And so the strategic plan was adopted by council on, in July of 2018. It's really, it's our why. It's the guide that staff uses for the vision, the core values, and basically two-year goals. It's what, it's what you want to focus on. And so with that vision, you really want to, you know, if you look at the kind of the circle, you want to talk about what you're deeply passionate about, what Salina could be the best at, and then what, you know, fuels our economic engine, you know? How do you get all that done? And so where those three circles meet is kind of where you want to focus. And so it just gives you the idea of how you should make decisions on those goals. And so, you know, up to your goals, I mean, there's, like I said, there's copies of the strategic plan. We want this presentation to be somewhat brief, so I'm not going to go through every one, but I can, I'm going to talk about them just really briefly. But, you know, the number one is to share our story, and this town hall meeting is part of that result, is to share our story. You know, and that's, we try every avenue we can to try to share our story. And we talk all the time, if nobody knows what you're doing, then you're not doing anything, right? I mean, that's just, that's just how it is. I mean, you hear stuff, and we try to respond on Facebook and everything else, but we want to get our story out there, what we're doing, what we're working on, until people know it. And a lot of that is, you know, with the city growth, you know, you have to plan the city. When you plan the city, you want to enhance the quality of life. We hear a lot about, you know, beautifying and branding Salina, kind of talking about what I said about having that rural country and ag feel and keeping that. I think everybody understands, you know, public safety and growing emergency services. You know, that's really important to people to make sure. You know, the number one reason that people move to Salina is usually first is school districts. People will think about where they can raise their kids and their families. And then the second is usually public safety. How safe is it? How safe do you feel? How do people respond? And then after that, it starts to be upcoming, you know, what neighborhood, you know, what parks and amenities and looking to be. Really important to council and to citizens, I think every time you hear about is to reserve, enhance, and grow our downtown. We'll be talking a little bit about the downtown plan that's in process right now later in the presentation. And then, you know, cultivate the right development in the right places. It's important for us that the right developments go in the right places so at the end of the day, everything fits together and has a reason for basically existing. Now, that's always a process. Sometimes that takes time to see as things go in. Unfortunately, when we try to, as we try to grow, we don't always, it doesn't always get to, you know, properties don't always develop, you know, one here and then one here and one here. You know, we don't control the owner's property. People have property rights and depending on how they develop. We just try to make the best of it as we can and how it fits into the plan that council approved and has citizens have to be. Technology. I think, you know, we've talked a lot about fiber and having good cell service in town and good fiber service. And so one of the big questions on that is what fiber is rolling out, and we'll be talking about that later in the presentation also. And then innovative learning, you know, like I said, school district is the number one reason why people usually pick to move to an area. You know, people want to see the ratings, what schools are like. And so we work really hard to have a partnership with Salina ISP, and we're also working with the Collin College. Their new campus is supposed to be coming in November, fall of 2021 near Carter Ranch in Bluewood neighborhood on Chute Park. And then encouraging agro tourism. So we've talked a lot about this. You know, Salina is various, you know, ag folks are heritage, so how can we maintain that? We've talked about trying to work with the, like, the Texas A&amp;M Ag Extension to have some partnerships where they can work on programs. We've even talked about, you know, how needed it would be to have a park in the future that maybe people could, you know, cut their Christmas tree down and add a, you know, maybe it's a city park where we grow Christmas trees and every year citizens could come and have a Christmas tree, or do a pumpkin patch, or have a community garden. It's something that kind of ties into the, you know, we're still brainstorming on those ideas. It's political. Very, very good. From there, please. Also important to the organization and to the city is our core values. You know, we had, we started this out with staff in groups because we really wanted the core values to come from our employees, from their understanding of what represents Salina because they're out talking to you all every day, and it allows them to have a lot of input because what you want to do is you want the organization to feel like they truly represent the core values. And so they came up with a really long list of different core values that they felt represented, and we narrowed it down. A lot of, some of the core values are very similar to each other, you know, integrity and honesty, and so then we tried to decide what would fit the best with that. And so the four core values were communities, which I think defines Salina a lot. I mean, every time I talk to residents, they talk about the community. Excellence. A lot of the employees, you know, when they come here, they want us to do everything right and do it well, and I think the citizens do the same one. Integrity. You have to have integrity. You have to do the right things and say the right things and, you know, don't lie to people, don't mislead people. I think that's really important. And then service. You know, we exist as a city to serve y'all. I mean, if, you know, we have to hire people that are here for that, and you want to have people help you that are here for that. If you work for a city and you don't believe in service, you just don't, you shouldn't be working in a city. I mean, that's our number one goal. So we talked about growth. So you can see the chart, you know, in the next five years. You know, we estimate the population in basically, in January of 2018 to be about 16,500. As the mayor kind of talked about, we just hit a record month, last month, of 143 permits, single-family permits for the month. And then the last six months, we've had three records, 127, 127, and 143. And that's just in the last six months. I think we did 100 then into this one, which is pretty good for our development. So for the year, we're going to finish about 1,250 permits, which we estimate is about three people on average per house. And so that means about 36,000 to 4,500 people are moving to the city every year. And so with the growth projections, you know, that means in less than four or five years, we could have 38,000 people, which is literally more than double the current population. I mean, anybody that's lived here for several years understands that. I mean, y'all have seen the growth come in, different housing neighborhoods and all the Just, we wanted to go through some of the, just the big high-level projects. I know some of you all have questions on that, and when we open up the question and answer session, we can talk about those. As I said earlier, you know, partnerships with the Salina ISP is really important to us. I mean, if you look at the best cities and the best school districts, we're all here to work for y'all, taxpayers. I mean, there's no reason for us to not work together because ultimately the loser is the taxpayer, and that would go against what we believe in. Expand it to police and fire departments. And so last year, council gave a market pay raise to police and fire to make sure that they would be competitive with other cities that we compete against for talent, and we don't like to train people and then lose them to other cities. But we also, this year, they authorized the hiring of six police officers, and so, you know, we have about 21, 21 officers before that, and so we've hired six this year. And then we've also authorized 20 firefighters this year. And if you ask them why, the difference is we were able to get a, what do they call a safer grant, the federal government. We applied through the state of Texas to the federal government to get a safer grant, and they basically pay, for the 18 firefighters, they pay 75% of the cost the first two years, and then 50% of the cost the third year, and then we're going to have to pay all the costs in the fourth year. But that's really perfect for a city that's growing because that means we can hire all the firefighters now and provide services. One of the, one of the issues with Salina is we are a very big area. I mean, we're, our ultimate boundaries are 80 square miles, and so we have to be able to cover as far as down south at 1385, and then all, and all the way to the east at Custer. And that's just a long area. You know, the only road over to 1385 that you can really drive a fire truck on is 428. We're working on some other solutions on Park and Frontier, but right now, 428's the only way unless you go all the way down with 380, and that's just, that's just too hard to drive right now. So we just had groundbreaking on a fire station at Light Farms, and then about three months, we're going to start construction on the fire station at Sutton Fields over on 1385. Council adopted a senior tax release in May of 2018. I think this is one of the things that council heard a lot from citizens, that they wanted the seniors to be able to have a tax release, and so that's been officially adopted. We studied that in several other cities, and many of the other cities in the area have adopted that also. And so council adopted that. With the growth and development, you know, having the right development in the right places with the right standards, we took a subdivision ordinance revision council and they approved it, and that really subdivision ordinance controls almost all development within the city in terms of planning, roads, and water, and sewer, and how much park land, and it controls all that. So we updated that and revised it and was approved. And then we also have really revised the permitting to make it easier to understand and be clear, both for the citizens and for property owners and developers, to get permits, anywhere from an accessory building permit to, you know, a single-family house to a commercial building. And then coming up to 2019, we'll be, we'll be looking at the zoning ordinance, which really controls, you know, what you can build and where, with standards like landscaping and aesthetics and masonry standards, you know, whether it's brick, stone, stucco, paneling feel. And then we'll be looking at the Parks Master Plan. You know, we'll be taking those, the Parks Board and CVC have several public hearings because we'll need input from y'all on the Parks Master Plan. What you want to see in your parks, what kind of parks you would like to see, and where you'd like to see those parks. And so we'll have a lot of community involved with that. And then the comprehensive plan will be starting in January, and we'll be looking for community members on that. And the comprehensive plan is basically, you know, the five to 10-year plan of how development is supposed to be, how it's supposed to look and feel. The last comp plan was approved in 2013, I believe, and so you should usually update those about every five years. This will be a complete overhaul, and then again, we'll have a lot of public input about what you want Salina to be, what you want to see, and how it should develop. As part of Salina, you know, they, with the last comp plan, there was a saying, y'all might have heard, it's kind of the city's business statement, but Salina by choice. I think, you know, I hear about a lot of, I've been here about a year and a half now, and when you talk to residents, you know, they typically chose to be in Salina. They didn't choose to be in another city, they wanted to be here. And so we've been trying to roll that out somewhat as a new marketing campaign about, you know, why Salina by choice, and then we'll have subsets under that about, you know, choosing parks and choosing trails and choosing school, your education, choosing kids. But basically, they really talk about Salina more to the general public, and it's part about also rolling out what we're doing and how we're doing. The Downtown Master Plan is, right now, under review. The next council meeting in December, which is December, you know, it doesn't need December 10th, Tuesday? Next, 10th, right? Next Tuesday. I said that. So next Tuesday on 11th, at the council meeting, we are going to be doing a workshop at the beginning of council to talk about the Downtown Master Plan. P&amp;Z has already seen it at a workshop and still has the Main Street Board. It was just posted online just now, the draft format, the Downtown Master Plan, under the city's website, under Development Services and Planning, if anybody would like to look at it. But the whole Downtown Master Plan basically rolls out, you know, how we're going to improve the water and sewer. We're looking at a design contract to do some major improvements in water and sewer downtown. You know, part of that is where we've had leaks and breaks. The most problematic area, you know, needed to replace soon, but eventually a lot of the water and sewer downtown will be replaced. Roads, we're looking at a design contract to start on some of the roads, replace them with concrete, and, you know, really kind of get the drainage out of the square. You know, right now, the square doesn't drain as well as we'd like it to, and so it's probably the first priority. Currently in design to, you know, remodel this building. You know, we're going to, there's, with the plan, we're talking about adding an elevated tower so that, you know, there can be an elevator for better ADA access, a refresh of the acoustics in here and the electronics. Downstairs, it's remodeled so we can fit more staff and kind of as that one-stop shop and have ADA access to the public for both engineering and development services. And then, and also to help invest in the downtown, the old city hall, which is now the EDC building, will be completely remodeled, you know, structural, electrical. You know, those buildings need a refresh because, you know, the city believes in downtown, and so we have to, we have to upgrade our buildings also, and that's really important. As part of the master plan, you know, there's been talks about trying to work on having more patios and concepts, work with restaurants, have more patios, kind of, when you come downtown, you know, we'd like to see your friends and family out and say hi to them, and that's kind of what makes it some of the downtown. You know, we talked about a refresh on Founders Park, which is on the other side, refreshing the playground, making it kind of have maybe a rail theme to it, but something that, you know, moms want to take their kids to, and post pictures of them on Facebook so that everybody can say, hey, that's downtown Salina, I should go there, I like the playground. And then, and then we've been also working on some forest development. We have a new office building going in. What's important about that is, you know, a lot of the office users, you know, they need the new wiring and new electrical and new stuff, and so a lot of the buildings, existing buildings are coming online. We're trying to save as many of them all as we can. But, you know, for offices, they have to have certain ceilings and heights, and that'll be kind of the first new office, and when it's built and it rents well, then that'll be kind of the first in and kind of set the standard. Tosa Walnuts pulling a permit to move out of Andy Jack's. If everybody, if you've ever been to Tosa Walnuts, it's really good. They have good sandwiches and hummus and other things, but they're going to partner with a retailer at the old Jimbo's right next to the EDC Main Street building, and we're really excited to see them. And then, if I say this wrong, forgive me, but Bongo Bo's Blue Rock Cajun Palace and Cajun Kitchen is going in the old Hattler's barbecue place with the old post office, the one that looks like they've just taken all the bricks out. We're kind of judging about it. They've seen the roof of a lot of buildings. They're standing in the back to add a kitchen and the bathrooms that are AD compliant. They're talking about doing a, probably our first kind of full-service restaurant, sports bar kind of place. They're talking about having, they're going to thence in the parking lot area, you know, press granted down and picnic tables and have a small stage for some like more acoustical type music. And then there's been some talk about the old drugstore here on the corner. I know a lot of people love that store, and the owner's talking about, you know, there's actually windows on the side and the door is posted in the, in the, in the front there. They're talking about completely remodeling it. They've started asbestos removal, and they're hoping to, they're not a meat yet, but they're really hoping to work with someone that's been like doing all the time soda shop, candy shop kind of place. That'd be a really great addition for the downtown. This is some kind of some concepts for the Downtown Master Plan. And again, this meeting's not really to talk about going over the whole Downtown Master Plan, just kind of tell you that we're working on it, and if you have more information, if you want more information, you can go online and download the plan. This is kind of, you know, just conceptual kind of visualization of images that could be the future of downtown. It's really a guidebook for us over the next 20 years. And then the next one, kind of, kind of understand your square concept and trying to, as we get bigger and we keep having more and more events downtown, you know, one of our few years is having some space for everybody to come and see each other. Trails Master Plan is in process. Hopefully some of y'all did the survey. We had 277 respondents, and, you know, I think everybody loves trails. I mean, that's one of the first things I heard from council was how many people love trails, and they really wanted that connectivity between everybody because, you know, what makes a good trail is, is you can walk out of your house and walk to it, and you can go someplace you want to go. Because that's when people use the trails the most. As much as we'd all like to be runners and be healthy, it's much more interesting if you can go someplace you want to go. And then there was a lot of responses about developing scenic areas, creeks, neighborhoods, you know, and then kind of trying to connect to the downtown and Old Salina Park. The other question we get about projects, we're in the middle of designing the expanding Old Salina Park. This is to the north of the park, up to 455. And so we talked about adding four more baseball fields and two big areas for soccer and flight football. I think that's a pretty common response, that we need more space for our flight football program and more space for the soccer programs to expand on to more ages. And then we talked about adding a fourplex to have more leagues, but also then maybe even use tournaments. We used the tournaments a long time ago, but they end up taking too much of the field space, and so we need to pick you on them, but they're great for visitors to come and see the downtown and spend money in the town, and so we're hoping to bring some of those back, but still have a good balance of residents using the leagues, the Salina leagues. We talked a little bit about the Light Farms and Sutton Field Fire Station. They should both, Light Farms should be open in about, possibly about nine months, and then the Sutton Field Station should be open in about five to a year, roughly. We talked a lot about the downtown. I can't say enough how much, you know, we're going to focus on the downtown, improving the water, improving the streets. You know, this is the old donation part of the downtown is basically the heart and soul of the original Salina, and so you'll see investment, but these things do take time. A lot of, you know, when you see all this growth and development, but the reality is that taxes don't come in from those developments for about 18 months, or we're always about 18 months behind because, you know, when you buy a house, you move in, you don't really pay full taxes that first year because usually the phrase of the district has some kind of partial value on your house. And so the city has to provide services immediately, but the revenue doesn't come in for about 18 months, so we're always, we're always doing a little bit of catch-up. And then water and sewer expansion. We're constantly having to build new, we're building a new million gallon treatment plant downtown at the current location where the current treatment plant is. We have to expand our treatment plant with upper treasury down south. It's actually on 380, Minneapolis City. And then you see the water tower that's going up, you can kind of see it in the horizon now over by Bluewood. That's a two million gallon water tower. The Light Farms is also ours, that's a million gallon tower. And then we're also improving our pump station to make sure you all have enough water. The growth has caused a huge increase in our water demand. You know, our last summer, we went from an average of about 2.5 traditionally, 2.5 million gallons a day, we hit a peak of almost 7 million gallons one day this last summer, and that's, that's almost a threefold increase in one year of our water demand. So it's a lot to keep up with, but we're constantly trying to do projects to do that. We're going to go through some polling. Alexis is going to talk about, we have some polling to do, and then we're going to go through a Q and A. We have some questions that have been submitted previous, ahead of time, that we want to read off and go through, and then we'll turn it up to General United Question and Answer after that.
So you've heard from us, now we want to hear from you. That's why we're here tonight. Truly. Again, my name's Alexis Jackson, I'm the Director of Economic Development. So a lot of times local government gets a bad rap. We like to have fun. This portion of tonight is about fun, is to be a little light spirited. Everybody that has a smartphone and wants to participate, you don't have to. Get out your smartphones now, please. I promise this isn't going to track you, it's not, it's just a one-time thing. It's just an opportunity for everybody in the room to kind of get a gauge on how they're feeling. So there's two ways you can do it. You can go to your web browser and type in pollev.com/Salina, or you can text Salina, and it doesn't have to be in all caps, but it can, to 2233. So we'll wait for everybody to kind of do that for a second. And again, it's just to have fun. It's supposed to be, we love our jobs, we love Salina, we want to make it fun for you guys to be here. We really appreciate you taking time from your families to be here tonight and giving us your feedback. So, and I also appreciate anybody that went online and submitted their questions ahead of time. So you guys already got the gist of it. It's just a warm-up question, has nothing to do with Salina. Which superpower would you like to have? Looks like we're, but everyone's kind of logging in now. You see how it works, you kind of get the gist of it. So it's a combination of multiple choice. The next question is an actual, it's where you live. So if you live in Carter Ranch, you're actually going to want to text Carter Ranch, or if you live in DC Ranch or what have you, you want to go to the next one. So we're just trying to figure out who in the room and when, where do you live, so it just gives us a better feel for the content for tonight. It helps us identify if there are specific issues. So you guys already got the gist of it, Bluewood, Tolson Estates, Heritage, Parkside, more Parkside.
Preston 455.
Preston 455, thank you. If your neighborhood doesn't have a name, you could just give us a street, you could say downtown.
So one of the questions that we had was, as more people move into Salina, will my water and sewer costs go up or are there ways to keep costs down? And there was very, several variations, we're not going to reveal all of them, but we tried to combine them into a series of questions. And so, you know, the cost of water and wastewater goes up for many reasons, not all of which are related to growth. To the contrary, properly managed growth can mean that water costs will be less than otherwise they would be, but this is because if growth occurs and more accounts are added, it means more monthly charges and more revenue. It's a concept known as economies of scale, but it means that the more accounts there are, the less of a cost of services to count. But that being said, you know, that does not necessarily mean that the rates will go down. Water rates are really not going down for any utility. I mean, inflation, you know, the cost of the projects, the CIP, and as we use more water, we have to buy more water from our provider, upper drainage, so those costs go up also. Higher water costs are a challenge, this impacts all cities in the area, but the city takes it very seriously to manage our growth. And you know, we just had a water rate study done, we analyzed the growth and development and how much CIP costs. And you know, the CIP is, I mean, the water and sewer is an enterprise fund, so everything that gets paid into the water and sewer fund is used for water and sewer projects to help with the pressure, to make sure that we have supply. There's no profit for the city when it comes to water and sewer. And so we just try to manage the best, to have the best service. People expect their water and sewer to always be on. I mean, there's never a time that it's okay for the water to be off or for your sewer to quit working, certainly not the sewer that we've done. And so we try to do our best. And so a question related to that was, how is Salina's water cost compared to nearby cities? And so we asked the rate provider that, when, you know, he studies a lot, he does a lot of the rate studies for other cities and knows all the rates. And you know, Salina's water costs are roughly averaging comparison to other similar sized cities, you know, cities like Prosper and Murphy and Little Elm, and we're similar to McKenney, but we're slightly lower than the private law companies like Mustang. But the average water and wastewater cost typically across the board in most cities is going anywhere from, you know, three to six percent per year. And they're increasing as the cost of treat water, treat sewer goes up. I mean, the state has more and more requirements on how to treat the water and how to treat the wastewater and that drives some of the costs also. And like I said, it is an enterprise fund, it pays for everything. Some cities do subsidize their water and sewer fund with property taxes from the general fund, but that's not something that we currently do. That would mean everybody would just be paying part of the property taxes into the water and sewer fund. It's not, and it's not always fair or reasonable to compare Salina rates to maybe a larger city such as, you know, Frisco or McKenney or Plano, they're much larger, I mean, hundreds of thousands of people with much more accounts, a lot more commercial growth. We hope that as we grow that we can moderate the cost and keep them down, but with inflation, they're always, you know, even the best you can do is hope to keep the rates the same. It's not typical to do everything down. And then also, Salina does have an inverted block conservation rate, and so that's very typical of other cities, so basically to try to help conserve water, as you use more water, it is more expensive on the gallons that you use above a certain rate. And that's typically based on trying to be affordable for the customers that don't use a lot of, that can't afford to use a lot of water and to conserve. And so basically the more water you use, the more you pay. So, and then some cities, and recently council approved an inverted block structure for sewer also, and that was an attempt to, for the customers that can use the least amount of water, the least amount of sewer, you know, use it only for their basic needs, can pay at a lower rate. And that's just, that's just trying to be affordable for the people that can only afford so much. But like I said, Plano has a huge population in North New York, as we get there, we modify the rates every year and look at them and try to be conscious of what we charge our citizens. Can you kind of see the graph right here? This is basically a monthly residential comparison charge if you use 10,000 gallons compared to what other cities charge. So the city averages about $89 a month and then Salina's at $99, but you go as high as South Lake at $120, some comparable city, McKenney, Kelller, Perry. And this is, everybody uses a different amount of water, but this is basically if you use 10,000 gallons. So we look at this and we try to stay within range of what other cities charge. Another frequent question we get is, how does Salina calculate winter wastewater rates? Salina does not use winter averaging, which many cities use. Currently Salina uses basically a wastewater usage cap. And the cap right now is at 14,000 gallons. So any water you use, we have a sewer rate that calculates based on your water meter because we can't meter your sewer. And so right now, all your monthly usage up to 14,000 gallons is also how we figure out how to calculate your sewer charge. Other cities have, you know, several cities use a cap system and several cities also do winter averaging where they try to pick, you know, three or four perfect months in the winter that would equate to what your wastewater usage is compared to your water usage because in theory you're not watering your yard. But it's an imperfect system because if you go on, you know, you don't ever pick December because a lot of people go on vacation and don't use it, or have a lot of friends over and use more water. Some months if you pick, if they're warm, they'll end up, you know, people can water your yard and then they're taking the rest of the year. There's really no perfect system. With the recently adopted water plan, we are reducing the 14,000 gallon cap by 1,000 gallons a year for the next three years. We extensively look at, we're trying to do winter averaging. If we went to winter averaging, that would mean that the lowest wastewater bill would go up significantly for residents and we didn't want to put that burden on people. You know, some of the rates for the highest users would go down, but the vast majority of the rates for the lower users would go up where you wouldn't, should have gone to see it. And so we tried to adopt a lower cap system, but phased it in over five years to absorb We had a question on, how are decisions made regarding city expansion and infrastructure growth? In capital projects, well, I mean, a lot of this, we talk about the strategic plan, we talk to council, council talks to citizens, we have public meetings. We also work closely with county and state to try to do cost sharing as much as we can. We've had conversations with Palm County on a few road projects. We're working currently with Palm County on Frontier Parkway. We've talked to Denny County about maybe helping try to see if they can, if you can do something on pardon if you're over 1385. And of course, Palm County's working on the outer loop. So we try to work on all our different capital projects, you know, stuff like fire stations, you know, as we expand, this is to provide service and we do that with the strategic We had a question, and I hear this a lot too, are we neglecting the older core of the city in favor of new development? I think sometimes people have the impression that we're so focused on new development that we have forgotten the downtown. And I can tell you that's the farthest thing from the truth. It's one of the reasons why the first big plan we did was the downtown master plan, why some of the first structural design projects on water and sewer projects, why we constantly meet with landowners in the downtown about new projects, bringing restaurants and, I mean, as you just said, Tinsley was the best new thing last year. And so, you know, hopefully everybody will love the new Cajun place coming and, you know, that'll be the next, best thing you know this next year. But downtown is the heart and soul of the city. I mean, when you think about what can differentiate us from other cities, it's going to be the downtown. I think you understand that here in as a citizen and council understands that and I certainly understand that. Had a question on, are the fire station expansions tax revenue justified? You know, the city makes every effort to run an efficient organization, you know, you talk to the chief, they, you know, during budget time, they do everything they can to make sure we're efficient, that we have as little overtime as possible, but at the end of the day, you know, the city's there to serve the citizens. I mean, if we have calls, we need to get there. And when people need an emergency, they expect you to be there. They don't, they don't want to hear that, hey, I'm so sorry, we had some traffic and there was another call and, and you know, the route that it takes to get there is, it takes an extra 10 minutes. I mean, people expect, when you move to a city, they expect responses, so you know, that's one of the reasons why we're staying in the fire department right now and also the police department is to help move response times. And we got the safety ring too, so that would really help us out too. Then another question, what's going on with taxes and the mud that is Light Farms? For those that don't live in Light Farms, it is in the ETJ, it's not in the city limits. The city does provide police and fire services agreement that they pay for and they also provide water, sewer retail, retail water and retail sewer. So, you know, as far as the municipal utility district, the mud board is a totally separate entity that has its own board governing it and makes its own decisions. But they produce surplus police and fire, water and sewer and they have to pull permits to the city. What are the plans for the downtown area including Founder's Park? Can I see a map? As I talked earlier, we do have some, we have the downtown master plan coming to council on Tuesday. We also have it online. The one online inside the book is kind of the overall plan view of the master plan along with the images that we showed you tonight, so you can kind of see that. We haven't fully decided what to do with Founder's Park, we talked about a refresh, maybe I'll bring your question down and then add it to our portfolio. There don't seem, another question we had is, there don't seem to be many options for parks in Salina. Are there plans to expand parks in the city? As part of the overall comprehensive plan and the Parks Master Plan, we'll be looking at parks. The city is about to expand Old Salina Park with the ball fields and the soccer fields that I showed previously. We have 100 acres over east of Preston, down Sunset, past, I guess about two miles past the Brookshires, we keep going Sunset, and we're working with the city and the developer. So we're putting in the neighborhood, it's called Parks of Wilson Creek, that will develop around that 100 acres. And as they develop and we have access in water and sewer, that'll probably be our next big park. We're looking at Founder's Park, which I talked about previously, possible expansion of the square to give more green space. But with the Parks Master Plan, we're really going to be asking y'all what kind of parks you want to see in the future and we'll be starting to identify areas where those parks should be based on the distance from neighborhoods. And we also work with developers to bring HOA neighborhood parks as part of the apartments of development. And so we started, you know, some of them, you know, recently, like we worked with Creeks of Legacy and the developer to make sure that that admin center was in as soon as possible. And new agreements, we're writing in exact timelines when those menus have to be in. This is an easy one, will Salina pass a senior tax value freeze? Several other cities have a similar freeze. And so we kind of talked about in the presentation earlier, but yes, the council did authorize the senior tax freeze this year and it should be able to start next year if people apply for it. Salina is experiencing rapid growth by annexing developed properties. Shouldn't these annexations produce revenues to provide improvements in sidewalks and the libraries, storm drain, mosquito control? Just that we have no senior center, can revenues support creating one? And so, it's a little bit like I talked about earlier. You know, we try to do the best with the growth and development, but we're always behind about 18 months with that revenue. And so we do have a senior center, that's quite accurate, I don't know if it's around here, but they'd be right next to city hall. We've talked long-term about where the future's, long-term senior center can be with the library downtown, likely right next door in this land, you know, this one. We've talked about the master plan, possibly having a two to three story building next door, you know, a little walnut that could be used as a future library or senior center. But first we have to do, take care of some other things like the fire stations and the police stations first. And we do have a mosquito control program. We have, we run traps and tests and then we have responsive basis of how the testing and if people have tested positive for anything. Meetings are held in the former Methodist Church, which is not handicapped accessible. Why is this not accessible for our seniors in the state? And so we do take that very seriously. I mean, we do have an elevator there, it's slightly old, but as I talked about earlier, we are remodeling this building, you know, complete structural redo, electrical, upgrade on the HVAC and then to address accessibility, we are adding a whole tower here that will have an elevator with access to this building, to this floor, the top floor and the bottom floor. And so now it takes approximately about 12 months to finish. We're about to start getting ready to go. And I think that's, I'm going to start introducing some people. So we have a question on fiber and gigabit. Scott? You want to introduce yourself? Who's that? As, you know, we have a lot of different departments here and they'll introduce themselves as they answer questions.
Good evening, my name's Scott Rommel, I'm Chief Technology Officer here in Salina. Question was, jumped in on the gigabit project in the city, where are the fiber data lines going? So currently, I can tell you that AT&amp;T is going to pass by the end of the year, right at around 3,500 homes, existing homes here in Salina. If you live in the downtown area, DC Ranch, Parkside, Mustang Lakes, Liliana, Bluewood, Creeks of Legacy, Sutton Fields or Bling Crossing, you have that today. You would have access to that today. They are not doing much marketing on it though. I would say if you're calling and not getting the answers that you need, the best thing to do is go to the AT&amp;T store in Prosper and they'll be able to tell you, be able to talk to somebody, they'll be able to tell you where you would be able to have it at your home or not. But those I just read off, I do know that they do have it. Those in DC Ranch, they were doing several, got lit here just a couple of weeks ago and they've been keeping the AT&amp;T guys busy, I know, since the day it got lit. Others that are going to be lit by the end of the year would be Preston Hills, Carter Ranch, Heritage and a portion of Light Farms that was installed with the, be the first portion would have been installed with DSL, but that's going to be hopefully lit by the end of the year, as I understand it. So again, how do you know when they're lit? I just keep checking either with the store in Prosper. If your neighborhood is lit, you know, put it on your Facebook page, you can tell other citizens that is, you know, you can now get AT&amp;T fiber there in your area.
Good evening, I'm Tony Briggs, your Chief of Police. This question is dealing with somebody wanted to ask if there's going to be a junior police academy here in town that would allow you to interact with the police and they have an interest in a law enforcement career. So I'm glad to see that question come in. We're going to be staffing a lot of officers here over the future. Currently, we don't have a junior police academy in operation, but it's in our strategic plan. So as soon as we have a staff, we will have a citizens' police academy for everyone to attend and a branch off from that is a junior police academy. But currently, what we did a couple of years ago is started a police volunteer group. Some of you here may be in that, in that group. There's three different groups in the police volunteers. There's for adults and there's a junior volunteer group and there's a clergy group for clerching here in town. So if any of you are not familiar with that, I would encourage you to look into the volunteer groups. You may have seen some of our citizens' volunteers at some of the public events. You can go to the police department's website and it has all the information on the volunteer groups and applications for those. So if any of you do have any kids that are interested in joining one of those, I would encourage it. We plan more activities for them in the future where they can interact with the officers and learn about volunteer.
We'll make your questions.
Individuals hunt coyotes on private land, there seems to be a significant presence in town. So anywhere you go or rent a vehicle, you see animals, you see the coyotes and you see other animals. There's been a heightened concern with the media, with the one in Frisco and Preston, Elravato area that seems to be chasing people, most of the time with very afraid of people and move away. There's a lot of laws that come into play when you talk about if somebody shoot a coyote. Anybody interested in that would need to look to the Texas Wildlife Commission that regulates the shooting of any animals in state and there's some very specific guidelines when it comes to coyotes. There's only certain situations that they can be actually shot. There's only certain situations that they can be actually shot. We contract, the city of Salina contracts with Collin County Animal Control. And they provide animal control to the city. So if you need any kind of assistance with animal control, be sure to contact Collin County. Let us know if we can help with that situation. And they can be very helpful in alleviating some animal issues that are occurring. There are laws, Salina has a city ordinance in effect that prohibits discharging firearms in the city limits. But there's exceptions to that under the government code. That we usually post on our website around times like dove season, where it comes up that certain acreage that you may own or be able to have access to, that you can fire guns, based on different aspects. That there's not daycares or schools within a certain distance. But we post those so people can read those. You know, there's even places in Morrisville, Preston Road, where people still can fire shotguns based on that law with Texas government code. But we have that information available for you, so if anybody wants to see the specific references, we have that for you. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Dusty McAfee, I'm the Director of Development Services for the City of Salina. And what that means is, is that we have building permits, code enforcement, and the planning and zoning division. And the questions this evening, we're dealing with code enforcement. We have questions about parking on the grass. We also had some questions on home-based occupations. And our code ordinances, it is a violation of the city's code ordinances to park on the grass. If you observe someone in violation of the code ordinances, please feel free to reach out to our code enforcement department. And it will follow up on the complaint in a timely manner. In regards to home occupations, this is a set of rules and guidelines that most cities have. Ours is very similar to the other cities in the region. It typically regulates things such as parking, signage, and ensuring that the integrity of the neighborhood is protected. But one thing important to note about home-based occupations is that the regulations do not prohibit the ability to have a home-based business. It just regulates the impact and any impedances that may be associated with that. Code enforcement simply is asking people to be good neighbors. And I think in Salina, we have a good situation here with that. And again, please contact code enforcement with any concerns or complaints and we will follow up in a timely manner. We also have this mission that is not on the presentation this evening. And it asks, what is the status of the O'Donnell Development? And it's my understanding that they received their zoning a couple of years ago. However, at this point, they have not chosen to move forward with their development. Now that may change as time goes by, but at this moment, there is not traction with that project. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Kimberly Broner, I'm the Director of Engineering for the City of Salina. I thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to do this. This is a fun job, I like to build things for living and we have lots of things to build. Right now, one of the common questions we have is Frontier Parkway, when are you going to fix it? When is it going to be finished? When is it going to start? Those are very common questions. Frontier Parkway, there's two pieces of it. There's a piece from Preston to DNT, there's a piece from Preston to Custer. Preston to Custer is a texted roadway and it is under their complete jurisdiction. Currently, those plans are under design and they're telling us, Malcolm Wood, that these, this roadway will be under construction in about 2024, 2025, depending on right-of-way acquisition and utility relocations and all those kind of issues. Frontier Parkway from Preston to DNT is at 60% design plans. They're expected to have 100% plans complete by early spring 2019. They will then start right-of-way acquisition and utility relocations. Construction is expected to start about spring of next year. It is a two-year construction project. We are going to build a grade-separated road crossing, so we will get to cross the railroad without ever having to stop. That is being worked on right now. Jason alluded earlier to the construction of Park and Road, which would take Frontier from DNT and extend it to the west all the way to the city limits at FM 1385. That is currently a project we're working on now, developing the scope and how, what's it going to look like and how can we construct it? We're working with adjacent cities to work on that one. Quiet zones in downtown. As you've heard from the other staff members, downtown is a focus for us. We want it to grow, we want it to grow responsibly, we want it to grow effectively. Quiet zones are a critical element of that. We have met with Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad. This, as you guys know, this is a very busy track of theirs. They are interested in providing the quiet zone, but they have certain, very strict infrastructure requirements before we can put those in. We have to put in raised curbs so that people can't go around the gates. We have to put in what we call quad gates, is where it comes down on both sides of the roadway. So that will keep people from going around. Again, it's a safety issue. Each of those is cost about $100,000 and we have six crossings in downtown. Being as I've said, they will only do it in two-mile stretches, so we have to take all six of them at one time before they will consider a quiet zone. We started with our first phase at the downtown evaluating those options. And we're going to do it as we can, as funding becomes available, we're going to get those installed. Trails. As you heard discussed earlier, multimodal transportation is an issue we are including. Many of us come from the south and we have extensive trail networks. We want to emulate that and build on that. We are currently doing the Trails Master Plan that was discussed earlier. Each new development is required to have a trail component with it. We are constructing these trails, widen them so that people can walk at least two abreast and sometimes three across. So you can walk with your spouse or your kids and the dog and not have to fight for space on sidewalks like we've all had to do at different times. We are currently working with a north design group to develop a master plan that will be presented to city council within probably the next, not this month, but next month. 1385, for those of you who are in Sutton Fields, you know right now 1385 is the only way in and out of Sutton Fields. We are working with adjacent cities. We are not the only city that has this problem. The towns of Prosper, Lilale, the cities of Aubrey and Salina, and there are a couple of utility districts along there. We have all passed, each of the city councils or governing bodies has passed a resolution of support saying text out, please do something about this roadway. It is a texted roadway, we have no jurisdiction on it. For those of you who are from Texas, text out moves at their own speed, but they have agreed to work with us. First step would be a schematic design, which will decide it as a six-lane divided roadway. And then we will start what's called an environmental clearance, making sure there's no, nothing in the way. There are some significant utilities that will be involved in that. So this will be a long-term project that the city will be working with closely on tech, with text out. One of these specific questions came from downtown. We've had a request for an installation of all white stop at Ash Street in Vicon. This warrant request that was discussed, anytime a request comes in with the city, no matter what the intersection is, there are specific engineering rules that we have to check out. Volume, crashes, visibility, each of those have to be evaluated and an engineering study has to be completed. This specific intersection is downtown, just around the corner actually. And the request was brought in to put an all white stop. It is currently a two-way stop, similar to most streets within a residential neighborhood. You have two-way stops up and down many streets. We cannot put multiway stops at every intersection that people would like it. We would never get anywhere in the transportation network. And there, it would be more than what we affect it for the community. We want to make sure that when we install them, we install them at the correct place with the correct signage. There's only a total of 600 cars a day running through the intersection. And there have been no reported crashes and there's no visibility obstruction. Therefore, we deny this request for a multiway stop. At this time, it is not warranted. As the downtown area continues to develop, it can be reevaluated. You know, if the commercial development comes in or traffic flows change, we are always willing to reevaluate any decision that's been made. No decision is made in a vacuum and we want to be responsive to the citizens. So if you have a request for some kind of travel advice, please call us. Our email is online, we'd be happy to take them, you can submit it through City Bot and then it will get to us. 380, there's two components to this question, US 380 and lighting. City council has given us the initiative to pursue lighting contracts for Preston Road. Right now, that's the only divided street we have in downtown. We're currently negotiating contract with an engineer to start designing on that. It is a 10-mile stretch from the south city limits to the north city limits. And it is a very, very, very expensive proposition to build it all up one shot. So we're going to build it in phases. The first phase will be from Preston, start, on Preston we'll start Frontier and come to the north. And we're going to break it in four pieces. That is currently under design. Now, many of you are involved and have heard the concerns that have been expressed on US 380. We do not touch 380, we have no control on 380, we have no jurisdiction. It is a texted roadway. I know that adjacent cities are working towards a safety, it is a very significant safety concern for all parties involved. Unfortunately, because of the speed of traffic on 380, when there is an accident, it tends to be extremely severe. Text out is looking at this roadway as possible modifications to it, including the current design is for a raised median that will run down the center of the, center of 380 and will expand it from four lanes to six lanes. With that expansion, there will be additional traffic signals, there'll be lighting, there'll be grade separations. It is a very large project. But it is currently in design.
Okay, so, I know everyone loves talking about planning, but we're running a little bit late. So we're going to put all the rest of the questions that we received on, on website, so we can open it up to you guys. So what we're going to do is the first three hands that I see raised, I'm going to hand you the mic and we're going to open it up. And then we'll go consecutively after that. So we're here to answer questions. If you don't want to raise your hand and grab the microphone, there's a box too. And again, we can get, give you guys our email too and answer the questions that way. So who's the first? Anyone have a first question? Anyone? You don't have to use the mic.
I, I, okay. Just curious, all the new power lines that we're adding on Preston, why are those not buried? Why are we doing an old fashioned one?
Nobody really wants to talk about this. We all want electricity, but we do not want to see it. Reality is all overhead utility lines are controlled by the Public Utility Commission. The town, the city, the state can't really control that, that's a different governmental agency. New developments, we request that they bury all the new power lines, but the city can't tell them no.
Yeah, cities used to do a lot of that and the Utility Commission actually took the city down to court and the city down and lost. And so now we can only, new developments, like if you have a whole subdivision, we can require that to be buried. If the power companies want a lot of line down and just being right of way, there's nothing the city can do besides permaling it.
Where are they even at it?
Usually it's because of demand or service. And so, you know, depending if it's Cozer or DCEC or Fort Worth. Sometimes they just want to make loops and connections and sometimes it's to a provider. Unfortunately, you know, you see scenes even when they'll start running double power lines down each side. It's unfortunate because we care about a state so much, but there's just nothing that we can really do about it.
Does anybody else have another question?
There seems to be some confusion. And we can go into the, on the online ones too. They cover a wide variety. I know Jay wants to talk about planning.
I just wanted to ask about the confusion over the mailing address for the Creeks of Legacy. It's a Salina neighborhood, but we have to use a Prosper.
Prosper, the mailing addresses are determined by the post office, we don't really have any say so on that. In the city of Salina, we have homes that have addresses to Prosper, we have homes that are addressed to Salina, and we have homes that are addressed to Aubrey. It depends on the mail service and where your distribution point is determined.
So it doesn't have to do with it being new construction, it just has to be where it's at on the map?
No ma'am.
Yeah, unfortunately, the postal office doesn't really care what city you're in, they just care what postal office they serve out of. And so it's really confusing because people associate their postal code with the city they live in. And we, there's even more complicated, I don't think Creeks is like this, but Sutton Fields is like this. There's a Dallas district of the whole postal office and then there's a Fort Worth district. And Sutton Fields is actually in the Fort Worth district. And so a lot of times, like, I don't, I believe, I think this is true, but a lot of times if you're in, if you put on your mailing address Salina, they'll still deliver it to your house. Because it takes work to get lost, you're right. But like sometimes people write, I mean, I've seen like Savannah, 380 is not even, that's not even a city, it's a neighborhood. People can write Savannah and that postal code, the postal office will deliver to you. If you're in a separate district, like if you're in the, if you're in Sutton Fields and you put Salina on your address, it'll never get to you because Salina's not in the Fort Worth district list of cities. And they're kind of like, and they're dropped down out of source menu. And so we try to tackle this all the time. We tried to see if we could get the boundaries, you know, changed and divided, but it's all based on their usage and volume, about how much, how they serve their routes and how much capacity they have in each postal office.
The, the, all the landscaping and the median, I know text out. But we're trying to be mindful of our water wastefulness. And I mean, I can get my car washed every day and it looks horrible because I'm running into water that's just putting on our roof and by honestly staining it. So how are we handling that? Is that stop shaming for the water that they're re-staining or?
A little bit of both. The text out, the roof, infrastructure was put in by text out, the irrigation and the landscaping. Text out has a one-year maintenance contract on that. So any of the watering that's done right now, they're paying for, or their contractor is paying for it. Our Parks Department monitors that very, very closely. We've had kind of a going back and forth, we go in and turn them down or turn on the rain sensors and their contractor comes through and sends it where it goes off no matter what. So our Parks Department is working on that. Once it's converted from text out to us, we will have more control over it and that will be monitored more closely. And will be rectified. Oh, and the contractor is paying for the water, the city doesn't pay for it. We just have to sit there and grit our teeth and say, fix this. We're all very excited to work here, it's a very high-energy place. We enjoy what we do. Sometimes we have to look at each other and go, how do we get this problem solved? Whether it's irrigation or utility lines or parks or waters, you name it. Sometimes this is a, we're scrambling to make it work. I'm asking some, we're talking finance.
I don't think I need that.
Well, it helps your face revive, it helps put you more on.
Well, we're building it for over here, Dad. You guys stand over here.
Hello, my name is Jake, the Attorney for Finance for just Salina. And the question is, can you pay the bill without additional fees? We have several ways of paying our water bills that does not require any kind of fees. But there is two different payment that we can do online, particularly credit card that requires payment fees. First one is when we go through our website, which is due to our provider, which is in the software. In addition to the fee that we pay, we pay our, to be accessed to them for adding charges. So in order for you to avoid that, you can go and take those directly through website, not in code, but other one, which is the correct payment online. And that, they have to charge 3% convenient fees because that's what we pay to the provider, which is a credit card company. So that money, that 3%, is a pass-through money, so the city does not keep that. So it goes from us to them. And that percentage is calculated based on the volume that we are using on the credit card. So when the volume goes up, that rate drops. Until we get to that point, we will not, we have no choice but to pay that 3%. Now, there are other drafts from your bank through us, which is not going to cost you anything, but you have to authorize us to do that, to draw it from your bank. And that way, you are not going to be late, you're not going to get charged late payment. And also is no fees attached to that. And although it requires 30 days waiting, by the time you fill out the form and we tap your account, that's good time. Always we can drop mail. Always we can drop mail, pay us the check, or drop it in the ninth part that we have at the City Hall, which is open for you to draw.
Cool. Thanks, Jake. I just want to thank staff. They've put a lot of time and work into this, putting this together. We have a great staff, and they've done a lot of good work right now, and staying really, really busy. We're going to try to do this again, what, about six months? But in the meantime, if you have questions throughout the, get on City Bot, contact any of us, contact any of the staff. They're open book, and they're always wanting to answer your questions and stuff. I'd like Jessica back there for doing Facebook Live, so it's going to be recorded, so if you want to go back and look at any of the diagrams he has up there, he's also going to have them online, Jason will. Again, thank you for coming tonight, and we'll see you next time.